Good evening, everyone. Call to order. Welcome to the regular board meeting of the Halton Catholic District School Board on Tuesday, February 7th, 2023. Trustees, in order to be recognized, please use the hand up feature in teams to be automatically placed in queue. Trustees, please remember to turn on your desk mics on when you speak. And please remember that if you speak, then you are not recognized, or when you do not have the floor, your mics will be muted. Item 1.1, Land Acknowledgement, Opening Prayer, Our Father, and the National Anthem. I ask staff to please start us off with the land acknowledgement.
Halton as we know it today.
Is rich in the history and modern traditions.
Of many First Nations and the Métis.
From the lands of the Anishinaabe.
Halton as we know it today.
Is rich in the history and modern traditions.
Of many First Nations and the Métis.
From the lands of the Anishinaabe.
To the Atawandaran.
The Haudenosaunee.
And the Métis.
These lands surround Dina greatly.
Our steeped and indigenous history.
As we gather today.
On these treaty lands.
Our Catholic social teachings.
Call us in solidarity.
With our indigenous brothers and sisters.
So honor and respect.
The four directions.
Lands.
Waters.
Plants.
Omnivores.
And ancestors.
That walked before us.
All of these wonderful.
Halton as we know it today.
Is rich in the history and modern traditions.
Of many First Nations and the Métis.
From the lands of the Anishinaabe.
To the Atawandaran.
The Haudenosaunee.
And the Métis.
These lands surround Dina greatly.
Our steeped and indigenous history.
As we gather today.
On these treaty lands.
Our Catholic social teachings.
Call us in solidarity.
With our indigenous brothers and sisters.
So honor and respect.
The four directions.
Lands.
Waters.
Plants.
Omnivores.
And ancestors.
That walked before us.
All of these wonderful elements of creation exists.
Gifted to us by our Creator God.
We acknowledge and thank.
The Mississaugas of the credit First Nation.
For being stewards of this traditional territory.
I'll move on down to motions. Item 1.2, motions arising from in camera. There were no motions in camera. Our next order of business is the approval of the agenda. Do we have any additions, deletions, or corrections to the agenda? And would trustees want to remove any of the items on the consent agenda under bylaw 9.7? Sing, sing none. May I have a motion to approve the agenda? May I look for mover?
I'll move it.
Trustee O'Hern Chanara moves.
I'll second it.
Seconded by trustee Murphy. I'll take it to a recorded vote. Give me a second. Trustee Carravella, how do you vote?
In favor.
Trustee Powell is absent. Uh, trustee Kennedy?
Favor.
Trustee O'Hern Chanara?
In favor.
Vice Chair Agnew?
Favor.
Trustee Murphy?
In favor.
Trustee Saunders?
Favor.
Trustee Kelly?
In favor.
Trustee Chua?
In favor.
Trustee Kuzma?
In favor.
We have seven in favor, none opposed, no abstention. Motion carries. The agenda is approved. Our next order of business is declarations of conflict of interest. So trustees, do we have any conflicts of interest to be declared tonight? Sing none. We shall move on to our next order of business, which is presentations. Item 4.1, 2023 EDC bylaw. Superintendent Loft, please introduce the presentation.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. Uh, we're fortunate tonight to have Jack and Madolia, our managing partner from Watson and Associates, to walk through the EDCs and the passage of a new bylaw in the spring of this year. So we're just going to walk through what EDCs are, as well as kind of mention some of the, um, the process in regards to our new bylaw that's going to be passed this, this spring. Uh, Mr. Chair, would I now like to pass over to Jack? So, Jack?
Everyone could hear me clearly? Great. Uh, so thanks for having me tonight. Um, as Aaron mentioned, uh, we're here tonight to discuss the board's education development charge renewal. Uh, we're going to walk you through a presentation that explains what the education development charge is. Um, some of the things that trustees should be aware of as we proceed through this renewal, some of the main policies. Uh, we're going to show you what the existing rate is, talk a little bit about timelines, um, and then finish off talking a bit about the legislation and how that's changed and what we can expect going forward for this bylaw renewal. Um, and, and you know, really if there's any questions, any comments, um, you know, now's the time to ask as well, um, tonight. Okay, just, yeah, thank you. So the first slide, uh, what is an education development charge? So it's a development charge that is imposed under a bylaw respecting growth-related net education land costs incurred or proposed to be incurred by a school board. So what does that mean? Really what it means is an education development charge looks at what, how many schools the board is going to need, how many new schools the board is going to need over the next 15 years to accommodate projected enrollment. And once that, that number of schools is figured out, you have to figure out how much land is going to be needed to buy to build those schools on. And, and then, once you have figured out how much land, you need to figure out how much that land is going to cost. Um, and that's really what the EDC is. It's trying to determine what the board's 15-year needs are for new schools, how much land is going to be needed, and how much that land is going to cost. Um, and ultimately, that gets all divided by the forecasted number of residential units to come up with a rate per unit. It's paid when you go and get out a building permit. So whether you're a citizen who wants to build a, a single house and takes out a building permit, whether you're a developer that's building, you know, a 2,000-unit subdivision and has to get permits, a developer who's building a thousand-yard condo, whenever you can go, go and get those building permits, that's when you pay the education development charge. So, uh, the rate that we figured out is paid at building permit issuance. It's collected for the school boards by the municipality, and each month the municipality transfers, transfers those collected funds to the board. And that's really your primary, uh, uh, funding source to purchase new school sites for growth. The ministry does fund boards that don't have education development charges for those new site purchases, but if a board has an education development charge, the expectation from the ministry is that it's those revenues that are going to be paid to, uh, to purchase that land. So if we move to the next slide, uh, just an idea of, of what the charges look like now. So the Halton Catholic District School Board, as well as your co-terminus board, the Halton District Board, you both have education development charge bylaws that cover the entire region of Halton, so your entire jurisdiction. It's a jurisdiction-wide bylaw, and what that means is that whether you're in Georgetown or Milton or Oakville or Burlington, the EDC rate is exactly the same. So it's applied uniformly throughout your jurisdiction. It's imposed on residential and non-residential development. So if you're building a house, you pay an EDC. If you're building, uh, non-residential, so an industrial or, or commercial or employment land, uh, building, you also pay the EDC rate. Um, and as I said at the beginning, the board plan, uh, plans on passing a new EDC uh, in the spring of 2023. Your existing bylaw was passed in 2018, and they have a maximum term of five years. You can always renew it earlier than the five years, but it can't last longer than five years. Right now, and, and I'll explain sort of the, the year one, two, three, four, five, you see on the bottom of this chart in a little while. But right now, if you look at year five, that's your existing rate, uh, $3,769 per residential unit. And on the non-residential side, again, if you're building non-residential development, it's 94 cents per square foot of gross floor area. If you look on the, the far right there, you see a, a column that says proposed maximum. Um, so when we calculated the EDC back in 2018, the charge that we calculated was $5,215 per unit, a dollar twenty-one per square foot on the non-res side. But because of ministry legis, legislation, first freezing the charge and then phasing in the charge, and I'll, I'll go through all that in a little bit, um, the, the charge was phased in to the current rate today, but you're not hitting your maximum because of, because of a maximum, uh, increase per year. And I'll, and I'll go through what that is. So what's, uh, what's important for a school board to remember, or for trustees to, to do, or sorry, for the school board, uh, to do before you can pass an education development charge bylaws? If we move to the next slide, uh, there's a couple of things that have to be done according to ministry legislation. So the board has to prepare an EDC background study, and that's what the board has hired, uh, my firm to, to help prepare. Um, and that background study must be approved by the Minister of Education. So before the board can renew its bylaw this spring, the background study, which contains the assumptions, which contains the proposed rate, which contains the number of school sites the board is proposing to buy, has to be approved by the ministry. Once we receive that approval, then the board has authority to pass a new bylaw. In addition, the board has to have two public meetings. So there's a public engagement phase that, phase that's legislated. So we have to have a meeting to review EDC policies, and we have to have a meeting to review the proposed new EDC rate. In addition, this board typically holds an additional third meeting, because the night that they consider, uh, bylaw passage is done in a public forum, so that can be considered an additional public meeting. The study itself, the background study, has to be made available to the public at least two weeks before the first public meeting. In addition, the background study dealing with the ministry has to be provided to the ministry at least 60 days before the board is considering bylaw passage. And notice of all public meetings has to be provided as well. And that's typically done through newspapers, either large circulation newspapers or, uh, or smaller, uh, local municipality newspapers. And that notice outlines the process the board is going through, the meeting dates, the proposed rates, and that has to be done at least 20 days again before that first public meeting. So those are the legislative requirements that have to be met by the board before a by, a new bylaw can be renewed or passed. Next couple of minutes, I'm going to spend, uh, talking a little bit about what I introduced at the beginning, um, the EDC policy. So the Board of Trustees is responsible for, for approving or, or, uh, uh, granting the, the new bylaw renewal. But within that bylaw renewal, in addition to a new rate and, and some other assumptions, there's policies, and, and it's different from a, you know, it's not like a transportation policy or an out-of-boundary policy. It's not an individual board policy, but it's contained within the EDC itself. And there's a couple of, of main ones that, that we should be aware of, um, because again, in addition to, uh, approving the new EDC and the bylaw, you're, you're approving these policies as well. So at the very beginning, I talked about that this bylaw applies uniformly to the entire jurisdiction of, of your board. So like I said, no matter where you're living in, in Halton region, you pay the same rate. The EDC policy allows you to either have a uniform rate like that, or you can have a whole bunch of area-specific bylaws. That can be, you know, charging all the municipalities a different rate, that can be literally drawing circles around developments and, and charging them a unique rate. Um, and, and most boards across Ontario, it's applied the same as your board on a uniform jurisdiction-wide basis. There are a couple of, of exceptions to that rule. But one thing to note, and it's sort of the last point on, on this slide, some of the changes that have been made legislatively, and again, we'll, we'll get into this, really limit, um, how many policy changes can be made right now. And, and what that means is, you know, and, and this applies to the, all the policies I'm going to talk about tonight, is that the policy doesn't change how much you collect, right? If, if, if we needed to collect a hundred dollars, no matter how much we change the policies, the intention is still for the board to collect that hundred dollars. But the policies really reflect how you're going to collect that hundred dollars. So if you're collecting a hundred dollars on a uniform rate, and you wanted an area-specific rate, maybe in, in, let's say Milton and Halton Hills, because of the growth and north of Highway Five maybe pays one rate, and everybody else pays another rate. So obviously, the, the high-growth areas are going to pay a higher rate, the low-growth areas are going to pay a lower rate. But because of this maximum cap that we have in, you're not going to have the balance that you need. If you still want to collect that hundred dollars, and someone has to pay 50, and someone has to pay 150, you're capped in terms of how high you can go. So really, if you have an area-specific bylaw, it goes over that cap, you're just incurring revenue loss. So it's not something as your consultant, I would recommend to do. Um, the other one is a differentiated charge. So I also mentioned whether you build a single-family home, whether you build a condo, the rate is the same. So again, the legislation allows boards, this is a change, uh, initial legislation, you could only charge one rate. Early 2000s, government made a change to allow for differentiated rates. So if you wanted to charge low higher, like single and semi-higher and a condo lower, boards had the ability to do that. Since that change was made, and that was made in 2002, 2003, I believe, no board in the province has elected to go with a differentiated rate. There's some boards over the last couple of years that have been, uh, considering it, um, and, and talking with developers about it. But again, similar to what I just said with, with the area-specific, if, if condos are paying less, singles have to pay more. If singles are capped by how much you could increase, again, it limits those decisions being made. Um, and, and the last one is the residential, non-residential. And this is something that we actually, uh, looked at in depth when the board, when your board last amended the bylaw. So again, your, your board charges 85% of the whole EDC revenue they need to residential uses, 15% gets charged to non-residential uses. The average around the province is about 90, 10, 80, 15, 85, 15. So you're right in that wheelhouse in terms of, of the average around the province. But last time we did the amend, amendment, the boards asked me to say, uh, to look at what if we increased the allocation towards non-res? What if we went up to 20%, 25%? There's a lot of non-residential development going on in Halton region right now. Should we try to share that, that allocation a little bit more evenly? Again, when we did the analysis, the problem is the non-res rates are also capped annually in how much you can go. So if we wanted to put more of a share towards non-res, we're limited again by that cap. So again, these are all important policy decisions that, in the absence of the legislation that I'm going to speak about in a minute, would be something that we would be talking about in depth with stakeholders and developers, bringing that all back to the, to the trustees. We're still going to do all that, but we've been clear with stakeholders, just like I've explained to you tonight, that there's limits in terms of, of what we can, what we can consider in policy changes, and it's unlikely that the board is, is going to be able to change any of those. So I'm going to quickly go through, um, of some of these policies. I, I touched on the important ones, but I just want for, for, uh, information's sake and to be comprehensive, I'll go through them. So the first policy, um, is percentage of growth-related net education land cost to be borne through EDCs. So a board doesn't have to allocate all their, you don't have to collect 100% of, of what you're, uh, calculated to collect. Um, however, um, if you don't collect 100%, you have a funding gap. And like I said at the beginning, the ministry has an expectation that if you're an EDC board, you're going to use those funds to purchase EDCs. So typically, you're going to try and collect 100% of what you can collect. However, you can grant exemptions. Some exemptions are statutory, they're built into the charge, you don't lose any revenue. If you however, and I'm, I'm just being a little bit facetious, but let's say we said, um, every house with a gray roof, we're going to exempt. Um, you can, there's nothing that stops you from doing that, but every house with a gray roof that doesn't pay an EDC, you now have to come up with those funds. So again, my recommendation would be to be very careful, um, in terms of any exemptions that are going to cause a revenue loss. And again, if they come up through stakeholders, we will bring that information back, uh, to trustees. Um, the next one really just gets into what I talked about, so I won't spend a lot of time here, but just important to realize that there are statutory exemptions, those are built in, no revenue loss. An example of that is intensification. So if you had a single-family home, you wanted to turn that single-family home into a duplex, you wanted to turn it into two apartments, you go and take out a building permit for that, you're exempt from education development charges. Because the theory is you're not creating more, necessarily more strain, um, by building an, an additional home, you're already have that house and you're just turning it into two units. So that would be an example of, of a statutory exemption, we work that into the charge. Okay. Uh, next one, I talked about jurisdiction-wide or area-specifics, I already touched on this, um, just important to know, like I said, that your, uh, bylaw can cover the entire jurisdiction, or it could cover only certain areas. Um, again, like we spoke about, pretty limited in terms of, of changing that policy because of the legislation. The next one we touched on was residential versus non-residential. Again, just to summarize what I said earlier, you can allocate up to 40% of your charge to non-res. Right now, it's 85, 15 split, and as I said before, um, right in the range of, of the average around the province. Um, again, just so trustees are aware, the range varies quite a bit. Um, some boards have a 100% residential charge, no, uh, no development or no cost allocated towards non-res. Uh, there's a couple of boards, I can only think of two, that are in the mid twenties, like about 25, 26%. Um, so again, most boards are in, like I said, that 10, 15% non-residential. Uh, we talked about the, uh, the uniform charge for all types of development versus differentiated charge. And, and I'll quickly just say, you know, that, you know, there might be trustees thinking, why have no boards ever enacted this differentiated charge? Again, even prior to these legislative changes that, that, you know, make it prohibitive? The, the easy answer to that is there was just such a propensity of low-density development going on for years, that these are the types of, of policies that we bring out to the stakeholders as well. So if you're talking to the large development organizations in the region like Home Builders or, or Build, um, we bring it out to them and say, is there a desire to see a differentiated charge? Again, because most of them were still building ground-based housing, the desire was to keep it uniform, knowing that if it went differentiated, low would be a lot higher. Again, as we see these density types changing and less ground-based, more townhomes, more condos, we're starting to hear developers look for that differentiated charge, but thinking back to what I talked about earlier, possibly in the future, if legislation changes and allows more flexibility there, but like some of the other one, it's a bit prohibitive now. Okay. So those are the, the main policies and kind of some of the main issues to, uh, to deal with. I'm going to spend the next few minutes, um, you know, I, I've mentioned these legislative changes and the impact that they have had, uh, on, on how we calculate EDCs, how policies are determined. I just want to go through so everyone's aware of, you know, what, what exactly I'm talking about. So, um, going back to 2018, um, in 2018, Ministry of Ed temporarily suspended approvals of EDC background studies. It's especially, uh, relevant to this board, because there were five school boards at that time that were about to pass, uh, EDC bylaws, because their bylaws were lapsing, your board, the Halton District School Board, uh, the two Simcoe boards, Simcoe County and Simcoe Muskoka, and Toronto Catholic. So we were basically caught in this suspended approvals of EDC background studies. Um, actually, the bylaw lapsed, and, and the board had no EDC bylaw for a while ago, I think it was five days, six days, something like that. Um, and, and obviously, we, we were in, uh, constant negotiations and talks with the ministry about the impacts that that had. Um, so, uh, between June and September 2018, the Ministry of Education approved three background studies, uh, these, this board was one of them, but the boards had to agree to certain conditions before they did so. And mind you, this was before the legislation came out. So this was through the, the negotiations and discussions we were having with the ministry. So what they told the board was, excuse me, you had to retain your existing EDC rates. So whatever the rate was in your 2018 bylaw, that could not go up, and you could only have a bylaw for a year. Um, knowing that the ministry was looking at the legislation, they basically included some provisions so that you can continue to collect, but not at the rate that was calculated in 2018. Then, in October 12th of 2018, Regulation 43818, amended Ontario Regulation 2098. And Ontario Regulation 2098 is the, the basically the, the legislation that governs how you calculate EDCs. So if we go to the next page, we'll go through what, what happened when that regulation got amended. So just like this board was told to freeze, uh, their EDC rates in that negotiated period with the ministry, that became official legislation. So every school board that had an EDC in effect, um, and you were, uh, in the process of renewing it, your bylaw, uh, rate was set at whatever it was August 31st, 2018. It limited the ability of boards to change areas in their bylaw. So if you had a, a bylaw that covered the region of Halton, and you wanted to, uh, not cover Burlington and Oakville anymore, for example, weren't allowed to do that. Had to, had to stay consistent with whatever the area was, again, August 31st, 2018. Uh, it limited or prevented policy changes. So while the legislation today is prohibitive to those, uh, the legislation, when, when this legislation was passed, it actually said you couldn't, uh, change certain policies, like differentiation, res, non-res. Uh, restricted new boards from being able to, or eligible to pass. Uh, restricted new boards from being able to or eligible to pass a new EDC bylaw. So if you didn't have an EDC and now you qualified, too bad, you you could not pass an EDC bylaw. And it also um in a in a good way streamlined some requirements included in the background study. So it just made the background study a little bit as less onerous, a little more relevant to uh to the actual calculation of the charge. Excuse me. Then fast forward a couple of months to March twenty-ninth, two thousand and nineteen, uh, and further amendments to the regulation came down. Um, so I call the, I sort of called the first uh regulation change, the freeze. I call this one the thaw. Um, so what it, what it did is, um, in effect, it lifted the EDC rate freeze, but it implemented the phase-in that I spoke about at the very beginning. So when I showed you the chart and your board had a maximum charge and it it went up by three hundred dollars, this was the legislation that put that into effect. So what that legislation said is that in year one, your existing EDC rate can only go up by a maximum of three hundred dollars or five percent of whatever, whatever the existing EDC rate was. So for simplicity's sake, your EDC rate was three hundred dollars. First year can go up to six hundred, nine hundred, twelve hundred, fifteen hundred, up to a maximum rate. Um, and the second year, same, so same thing. So it's always that three hundred dollar maximum. So that was what was going on with the the uh residential rate. Um, with regard to the non-residential rate, that could only at the time go up by five percent of its existing rate. So where the residential had an absolute and a percentage that it can go up, and whichever one was greater is what the board can choose, non-res only had five percent to start. Again, if we go to the next slide, fast forward a little bit more, and there was uh some other uh amendments and regulation changes. Um, so at that point, they added a few more exemptions. So I talked earlier about statutory and non-statutory exemptions. They added some additional statutory legislated exemptions. Uh, they eliminated the clause that I spoke about where boards that didn't have an EDC bylaw couldn't pass one. Uh, any board that wanted to to pass a new bylaw was able to. And this one, uh, what I just spoke about, so the non-res initially only that five percent increase, they changed that, recognizing that that five percent increase was not uh significant enough um compared to what the calculator rates were. So similar to the residential rate, they put in an absolute uh value as well, that was ten cents per year. So again, now you can go up ten cents or five percent, whichever is greater. They introduced a couple of things, um, alternative projects and and local education, local develop, local educational developer agreements. And I'll just spend a minute talking about what what those are. So typically, when we think about an EDC, um, the the monies that you collect for that EDC, and this is an important one, can only be used to purchase land for new schools, to prepare that land for new schools, so grading and and soil issues and and whatnot, but not towards capital, right? As soon as you get to the construction phase of that new school, that's where the ministry funding model comes in and where you you do capital business cases. However, with regard to alternative projects, one change that was made to the legislation says that if the board was in a situation, and I'll give you a couple of examples that the ministry uses, where you can build underground parking, let's say. And by building that underground parking, perhaps you can acquire an acre less land. And knowing what land values are in in Halton region right now and many other places, if that cost of underground parking was less than the cost of the land that you would have acquired, right? So let's say underground parking was a million bucks and the acre of land was two million. Then this new legislation says that the board can actually use EDC funds to go towards some of that capital construction, again, if it's a cost benefit to the board. Another example they give is, let's say you can build a three-story school. The funding model doesn't contemplate that, so there'll be a shortfall. But if that three eight, three-story school, again, could eliminate an acre of land and it's less to pay for the verticality of the school than it is for the acre of land, again, EDCs may be used to to contemplate that. So it's it's something that we're, you know, I think it's fair to say every board is open to that discussion with with the stakeholder or developer. Ultimately, we would just have to run that that uh financial analysis to see if it was a cost benefit to the board. So that's that's one change that was made. The other one, LIDAS, uh, referred to the acronym, or Localized Educational Development Development Agreements. What those refer to is, say that you're a developer, um, a big developer, let's say you're Mattamy, for example, and you're building a two-thousand-unit subdivision. And you say, you know what, I don't want to pay the EDC rate times two thousand. I'd rather just give you the five acres of land or six acres of land that you need for your new school. That's something the board could enter into. Um, so again, the developer would, you know, just run the math, right? And and if it was more economical for that developer to give up that land or, you know, another example I heard is if it was a podium school in a condo, perhaps the the developer would build the school for you uh for the exemption of all the EDCs in the condo. So that's a possibility too. In my opinion, because of the cap, um, it limits a lot of those those possible arrangements. Because I think if I'm a developer, then I'm doing the math, until the EDCs become basically a prohibitive rate compared to land values or or construction of of, you know, for developers building a podium school, that's when those things are going to start to to come more to the forefront. Again, I can see alternative projects possibly coming, like LIDAS, I I think are are a bit away, or at least while the cap's in place, might not be a possibility. Alternative projects, I I can see that over the next several years being something that that becomes more prevalent in in education development charges, especially as the value of land continues to increase. So just quickly on on the last slide, I just want to give trustees an idea of of what's next. So um, we're working on the background study now, um, should be ready, uh, hopefully in the next month or so, um, and then it gets vetted and and through uh board staff and sent to the ministry. Uh, we have EDC stakeholder meetings. So I talked about the the legislated public meetings that the board has to have. In addition to that, we reach out to stakeholders uh in the region, and we have separate meetings with them. Um, we had one already, um, an early stakeholder meeting, just to really go through a lot of the things we talked about tonight, uh, some of the legislative changes, some of the issues we foresee, to ensure that if there were any questions, we weren't waiting to the last minute or any issues we were, we were hearing from stakeholders early on. Um, and there's another one planned for, once the rate is out and the background study is out, we will meet with those stakeholders again. Uh, then you'll have a draft EDC background study, we'll release that to the public, go through the public engagement meetings that I spoke about earlier, uh, and then hopefully be in a position to uh with ministry approval to pass a new bylaw sometime in May or June of twenty twenty-three. So I'm going to stop there and see if there's any comments or questions from trustees, and I appreciate your attention so far.
Thank you, Jack, uh, for your EDC one-on-one presentation here. I see, I see one hand up. I thought we had it figured out. But uh, I see a couple of hands, hands up. Okay, so trustee Ohun Chanara, you have your hand up, you're the floor.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair. Just, I have two questions. I'll ask the first one. The public meetings are stakeholder meetings. How how well-attended are they? And who usually goes there? Developers?
Yeah, oh, municipalities as well. Stakeholder uh meetings are really well-attended. Um, we typically always have, you know, representation from the big developers for sure. Uh, we have representation always from at least all the municipalities, uh, someone from the region. So they're they're very well-attended and and we have good dialogue. Um, you have a stakeholder community in particular that's very involved, that we've had a long uh standing relationship with, um, that that seems to work, you know, knock on wood, pretty well so far. But yeah, they're very involved and and uh quite, quite involved participants.
Thank you, trustee Ohun Chanara. You have a follow-up?
I do. Through you, Mr. Chair, to Director Klein, probably to Superintendent um Loft. So, so we had a freeze and then a thaw, but at the same time, we're purchasing land. So, so we must have a gap between what we've spent and the fifteen-year payback plan.
Superintendent Loft?
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair. Uh, trustee, to trustee Ohun Chanara. I guess we do have a significant gap between what we owe and what we've received so far in EDCs. It's around the seventy million dollar mark right now, uh, give or take.
Did you say seven zero?
Seven zero.
Seventy million. Thank you.
Do you need any clarification?
No, I just got to get over that number, but yeah, thanks.
Thank you. Uh, next up is trustee Saunders, and I apologize, for some reason, the order of speakers list has flipped over here. And anyway, trustee Saunders was actually first, but trustee Saunders, you're the floor.
Yeah, I'm just wondering, you'd mentioned there was this eighty-five, fifteen. Is there any benefit to us going to like ninety, ten, or, uh, I'm just wondering, what what determines, like, if we were doing like cost benefit or like iterations, if we were like ninety-nine, one, would we have more money? And is the reason we don't do that because of optics?
Uh, so, great question. Um, so it's, it's, so the ninety, ten, eighty-five, fifteen originally came from discussions way back in the two thousands when the EDC was kind of being, boards were starting to to renew it and through large stakeholder discussions with stakeholders, developers, municipalities. That's where the ninety, ten split kind of originated from. Um, to answer your question about, you know, should we go more, should we go less? We look at that every time we we renew the bylaw. We look at, you know, how a building permit's been tracking, how have non-res uh square footage been tracking? How close are we? That was one of the reasons why, because of the the influx of non-residential development, was one of the reasons why we looked at it last time. Um, so so yeah, we'll, we'll look at it again this time. Um, we'll see if eighty-five, fifteen still makes sense. If we change it, we'll see what impact that has regarding the the rate uh uh phase in and maximum, and and we'll determine at that time. I hope that answers.
Thank you. Trustee Saunders, you have a follow-up? Uh, trustees, do we have any other questions? I have one question, Jack, and you talked about schools going vertically up and you can use the EDC charges for that. Can you elaborate a little more about that and what, are there any exemptions or are there any restrictions to that?
Yeah, um, you know, the 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 simple answer is we don't know, um, because it hasn't been done yet. Um, so the ministry has has given us this legislation, they've included a couple of examples, but no boards that have enforced EDC rates have considered an alternative project yet. So I think it's going to be something that, you know, I I hate this term sometimes, but building the plane while we're flying it, right? We're, we're trying to work out exactly what that might mean, um, how we might include. The one thing is to include, to to be able to include an alternative project, it has to be in the background study. I don't think that you're going to be able to put something like that into the background study until you have a really um, uh, detailed deal on the table. I don't want to put something in a background study and possibly cause you to lose two million dollars on the hope that we're going to be able to do this when we really don't know yet. Um, so the way we we think what we're going to do is we would include, if an alternative project came up, we would identify it and include it with a zero cost. We would still keep the land purchase as a whole and keep the funds there. If it came to fruition, we can go in, we can amend the background study, allocate the dollars accordingly. Um, so, so I hope that answers your question, but it's it's a lot of, you know, we we really, we have an idea of how it might work, but again, until it it actually happens, we'll have to work out those finer details.
Thank you, Jack. Uh, any other questions, trustees? Superintendent Loft, uh, trustee, oh, sorry, I didn't see that. Uh, okay, so I had trustee Ohun Chanara, you're the floor.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Jack, so I'm trying to understand the philosophy. So we are allowed to use our capital if we want to build an underground parking for our high school, let's say. That's when we can use our capital monies?
You can use your, possibly, you can use EDC monies to fund that. So so capital would be, um, you know, building the school and and all the things that that go along with that, parking lots and all that. What this is saying is that, let's say you can get rid of your surface parking lot and lose an acre, so started at the beginning. So let's say you had to go and get a seven-acre site. That's what we were approved for, and that's the model that we're going to build on. And a developer came to it, or not even a developer, we we figured out that we can actually do, get rid of the surface parking lot, buy a six-acre site instead. So let's say that we save now, it's a two-million-dollar-per-acre site, we've saved two million dollars on that site. So we'll have to park somewhere, so we want to build an underground parking lot. Under the legislation of the EDC, you're not allowed to use EDC, you know, take the alternative project, you change. Historically, you weren't allowed to do that. It was only site purchase, grading, that's it. Now, what it's saying is that if it's a cost benefit, it's actually going to cost less and save some land, then you can actually take that EDC money and put it towards the underground parking. So you can put it towards that portion of capital. You still can't build a school with it, right? It doesn't contemplate that. It doesn't say you can save a couple of acres and you can build, but it doesn't say that. That still has to be through regular funding mechanism, capital business cases, but if it can offset, that that's what it's saying. So it's giving you the ability in limited circumstances to use some EDC funds towards capital.
Thank you, trustee Ohun Chanara. You have a follow-up?
Just to comment, and maybe I'm taking it from a philosophical level, so we're going to save land? For what?
Save money.
For our schools, we want land, right?
It's ultimately saving money.
Unless they're going to build a park.
It it's maybe, maybe that's the wrong way. It's it's it's, well, ultimately, it's a cost benefit analysis, right? If you can buy one less acre and save two million and build a uh underground parking for a million, that that's an example where you could use it.
Thank you. Thank you, trustee Ohun Chanara. Uh, trustee Kennedy, you're up next, you're the floor.
Just a quick high-level question, maybe through you, Mr. Chair. So EDC funds are used for a board experiencing growth. Um, we experienced a lack of growth this year, I think seven hundred students. We never really spoke about it. Do we have a projection for the years to come that we're going to start growing again?
Uh, I'll pass this to Superintendent Loft, maybe you can add on to that.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. Um, we do have the, it's going to be part of our background study as well. We'll have the growth projections in there. Um, I believe Bronckle sent the, sorry, Bronckle's our senior manager of planning, sent our projections into the ministry. And if I'm just going off memory now, um, I believe we were down in elementary but up in secondary uh for next year and then go going up slowly, just not at the rate that we were. Uh, trustee Kennedy, that we had been forecasting in the past, we were extensive growth in the past. The past number of fifteen years, our growth chart was like this, and now we're kind of hit a little bit of a blip. So, um, we still do have the need for land, though, like our our schools in the north, especially in the Miltons and such, are at a very large capacity right now. So there's always sites that we're we're looking at, needing or requiring, even though we're not getting that same kind of growth. Where we're seeing the growth is in the north, where we're going to need additional sites and schools in that area. So.
Thank you, trustee Kennedy. You have a follow-up?
Does the Halton School Board also have EDC charges and like, can, is the rate we can charge dependent on the amount of students we have or our growth? And like, yeah.
Yeah, I'll get into maybe both of those questions. So so maybe to build off what Superintendent Loft mentioned, even if you're, let's say that your overall enrollment is stable, the EDC growth may still be there, because the way to think about it is perhaps your schools in downtown Burlington and downtown Oakville are stable or declining because of of those neighborhoods maturing. But you still have to buy new school sites, right? So the EDC growth that I talk about, it's not necessarily looking at your total board's enrollment, but it's ensuring that in those high residential growth areas, where you're still continuously buying new sites and and will be for many years to come, that's what the education development charges funding is is those new sites. So it's, you know, obviously, you've been a growth board for a long time, that's why you have EDCs, but even as total enrollment may stabilize or or like Superintendent Loft uh mentioned, it will still grow, but maybe not at the same rate. The growth areas are still going to require that that funding. Um, and and with regard, sorry, your other question was just with regard to the the
Just curious about the Halton, the Halton District School Board, do they do EDC charges as well?
They do.
And do, are we, if we're thirty percent of the student population, Halton, do do our rates, are they smaller?
Yeah, the rates are smaller. So so it's it's based ultimately, again, not necessarily on share, but how many school sites each board is going to need over the next fifteen years, because that, because the Halton District School Board is larger, more enrollment, maybe growing at a little bit of a quicker clip, um, they require more school sites, so that's why their EDC is higher than than yours. But both boards, exactly the same EDC bylaw, same exemption, same application, same assumptions. You're welcome.
Thank you. Uh, next, next up is trustee Saunders. Trustee Saunders, you're the floor.
Um, through you, uh, Mr. Chair, just for Superintendent Loft, so you've mentioned we've got this gap. Uh, are we projecting to close that gap over a period of time based on the the EDCs? I'm just wondering sort of when we get to zero or do we close?
Superintendent Loft?
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. Um, part of the problem that we had, uh, trustee Saunders, is what uh Jack actually mentioned before. So if you look back in two thousand and eighteen, our projected um, EDC amount was fifty-two hundred dollars. In reality, we only were able to go at thirty-two hundred dollars, roughly, I'm rounding here. Um, even now, in our past year, we're at thirty-eight hundred dollars or so, which is still below where we thought we would be in two thousand and eighteen. And you can imagine what we've purchased the sites at, our more recent sites, or even at a higher real estate cost than they were in two thousand and eighteen. So, um, it's difficult for us to to say what exactly will be paid off. The other complicating matter in this is our seventy million is based on today, but we still need to buy more sites. And depending upon what those sites cost, we're going to be adding to our uh EDC deficit. I'll just call it that. It's an EDC deficit that we have. So we have been receiving, the last few years have been actually very strong EDC revenues. We've been getting around the fifteen million or so each year for the municipalities for EDC revenues. But again, that's based primarily on our hundred percent due to housing starts and building permits being uh um executed by the municipalities. So it's something to be mindful of, um, as an organization. There's really not much control we do have, unfortunately, on in this uh development. We can't say we need more and thus we get more. We have to follow the line. development, we can't say we need more and thus we get more, we have to follow the legislation.
Thank you, trustee Saunders, you have a follow up?
Just to follow up through you, Chair, how are we funding that gap? Are we using like this sort of general capital right now, or or what are we doing? And what is it limiting us?
Superintendent Love?
Sure, I didn't know if if Jack wanted to talk with. Yeah, okay, I'll just answer this one. So how we're funded for, we have a line of credit. So we have a line of credit, we upped that line of credit last year. We increased it because of the number of sites that are coming down the pipe that we needed. The one part is it's not impacting the school, that interest cost is EDC eligible. So any cost that we have for that interest on our seventy odd million or whatever the exact number is right now is not impacted, doesn't impact the board's bottom line. So whatever that interest amount is, is EDC eligible expenditure, we would get revenue for that.
Check? If I can, if I can just add a little bit more to that. And I'll I'll be honest and blunt, the the cap is a disaster for EDC revenues and for school boards. Previous to the cap, there were there were significant issues that we raised with the Ministry of Education on how the EDCs were calculated, how they were cash flowed. And the result of that was worse, the result of that was we got a cap. And and Aaron hit it on the head, you're supposed to be collecting about, you know, fifty-two hundred, I think, five years ago. And you've been collecting, you're still only collecting thirty-eight hundred or less than that now. So that's just going to get exacerbated and exacerbated over over time. At some point, someone has to pay for all this, but that's something that, you know, the Minister of Education is not talking about with regard to the cap. So I I think it's fair for trustees in the public to be aware of of, you know, that funding gap is is not probably going away with with without a significant change of the legislation.
Thank you, Jack, trustees, I don't see your hands up, so I'm assuming we figured it out. And thank you so much for your presentation, you made it look so simple, but it's very complex in the background. So thank you for presenting, once again, thank you Superintendent Love, for all the wonderful work that's being done behind the scenes.
Appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on down to our next presentation, item four point two, Director's Annual Report, Director Clan, please present your report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you, Mr. Chair, I'm going to try and wrest control of this. Taking over, Nicky. Pretty please. Yep, I'll get it now. All right, you should be able to see it, I think. There you go, right in front of me. Through you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, everybody. I would like to first of all thank the former director who is here, this was really, in many ways, this would be his report. This goes through the years twenty-one and twenty-two. The senior team, of course, I worked with him and helped lead this. All staff throughout this board, and of course trustees and others who work to make the HCDSB what it is. I'd like in particular to thank Andrea Swindon, our manager of strategic communications for the not only what we have in front of us in terms of the virtual version of this, but the rather large, larger than usual postcard versions of this with the QR codes that we have too. It's a an engaging engaging and I think visually catchy way of having people take a look at our directors' reports. So a director's report comes annually, of course, tell by the name. Others boards do this in December, January, here we are doing ours. And I would like again to to lead you through this and skim and highlight. One of the first things you should notice is that the the report itself has as its framework or skeleton as it were, the MYSP. So as we go through these, you'll notice that we have the the priorities, the four priorities of the MYSP and the fifteen goals, sort of three, 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 and then the added five goals that we use in our MYSP. So there is a bit of a a theme to this as we go through. So the page that starts us off, we'll leave the picture of that guy at the top, gives a basic rundown of what the stats are for this board and what the vision is of this board. So it 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 starts with the MYSP itself, which you're all very familiar with and which really undergirds all that we do. Of course, you see all of these wonderful people and these wonderful people. And then with that, we enter into the the priority areas, and we'll start with achieving. So again, just to highlight some of the work that we do, focus of achieving, of course, is to meet the needs of all learners, to to tailor what we do for the needs of our learners. And the goals here, of course, are that experiences and opportunities are differentiated or or shifted or modified to support all learners. The teachers and learners are collaborating in innovative school and classroom communities and encourage student engagement, learning and achievement, and that we hold high expectations for all learners. Notice here that sixty-four percent of respondents agreed that our schools, teachers and learners collaborate in ways to promote student engagement, learning and achievement. And we move forward with a few little snapshots of what we mean by excellence at HCDSB. You'll recognize that each year, this board celebrates exceptional students across our school district at the annual Student Awards of Excellence. And we'll just scan over those wonderful students that we have. Putting in the spirit of inclusion, CAC Awards. When you have the occasion, if you haven't already, feel free to look at the virtual ceremony from last year again that celebrates all that we are in terms of student achievement. Few highlights would be the IB program that we have at the board. And I remember meeting this young woman in the fall at the graduating ceremony for the IB program at St. Thomas Aquinas. And then we have facts, of course, to delineate and highlight some of the areas of importance within the IB program itself, which really is not something that other boards necessarily have, nor do they have to the extent that we do here. And it is a a good draw and a good component of what we do here at Halton. Little highlight is that we have have highlighted and noted the Governor General's Award winners for this year, and they are on the website below, showing those students that have excelled at extremely high level of achievement in their academic success. Many of you are aware, certainly the chair of the board here is a very passionate defender of steam. And of course, that is another component of the work we do here at at the board. And so that is also highlighted as well in terms of the work that's been done to engage parents and students with regard to those areas of of academics. Esports tournament. And other highlights that we would want to share with the public and share with ourselves in terms of celebrations. Right here in this room, not that long ago, we did have this wonderful teacher, Doreen, who was here to speak to us. And again, a celebration, it's not just students are excelling, but we have staff as well. And Doris, of course, won, or Doreen, of course, won the English Language Arts Ontario Award, the ELAN. We have some other winners here in terms of poetry and the hyperlinks lead to the works of these students as well. And Skills Ontario competition. Students who have here in Ontario and beyond excelled in areas of trades and areas of skills of creativity and of course problem solving. And we hosted our inaugural Trades Career Fair as well. Other award winners. Orin Kataya. And on and on, and the links I would encourage you to take. The other priority area, of course, is believing, achieving, believing, belonging, and of course, the foundational elements that undergird it. We are, of course, a Catholic school system, and that our distinctiveness is found in our faith and in our traditions. And the goals within that are all learners experience a Catholic learning environment rooted in gospel values and the Ontario Catholic School graduate expectations. That our schools foster the relationship between home and parish. Staff and students are discerning believers formed in a Catholic faith community who model Christ in their actions. And some statistics here in terms of feedback from survey, survey that that supported this. We start with Catholic Education Week, that comes in the first full week of May every year. And it's an opportunity for all of us, wherever we are in the Catholic schools, to celebrate the gift that we have here in Ontario that's been passed along to us of Catholic schools. That's a good place to start, and certainly the report that you have here reflects a school board that was for this year of the report was coming out of two years of of a pandemic. So those themes of rebuilding and restoring and renewing were were very apropos. Journeying with Jesus during Catholic Education Week began, something that is a tradition at this board. There are links through all of those for you. Course, one of the famous components of what happens here at Halton Catholic District School Board at Christmas is the Keeping Christ in Christmas contest and celebration and award winners. And of course, if you do win, a year later, you're still kind of in the spotlight because your card is something that then is used for the following year's school board celebrations. And I need not get into that, but I think it would highlight that nearly eleven thousand votes came through for these. We had nearly six hundred entries to it, and that is all a sign of the living faith that we have in front of us. And there we are for some of the cards. And again, great opportunity for our schools to contribute as they have for generations to charities locally and beyond. The tiny home build in partnership with Habitat for Humanity, that was something of a highlight for the twenty-one, twenty-two year. And that, of course, worked with the Chipewas First Nation up in the up in the Bruce area. And that was at Nordham Catholic School. Many pictures here to show the work that students engaged in in order to contribute to not only the social good beyond, but also to help in a in in a modest but sincere way to the the challenge of truth and reconciliation that Catholic schools certainly have responded to rightly so. Beyond students and their faith development, Catholic schools don't take for granted that the adults who are here also need and thirst for development within their own faith life. And I think of quick skimming through some of these workshops and some of these mini courses and some of these events, you have a great sense of the breadth and depth of the efforts and the successes in terms of building up the spiritual dimensions of the lives of our staff. And also building up the theological underpinnings of our leaders as well, because to become a leader in Catholic schools, you need much more than the understanding of pedagogy or understanding of educational law. You have to have a great sense, of course, of what your vocation is within that context. Every year, right before Thanksgiving, we have a PA Day where we celebrate and we deepen our faith. And back in twenty twenty-one, that of course occurred too, and we have some artifacts from that as well. And again, going back to the Education Week, the whole concept of redo, renewing and rebuilding and restoring was there. And I think for all of us at that time, there was a thirst for restoring and renewing. And that was certainly evident on that day where we worked with staff to again come back to the well, renewing their faith. David Wells, who many of you have seen in many contexts, of course, was a very big part of that, as he was in this last year as well. Social justice and other components of our faith are not only celebrated, but they are marching forward in the work that we do in the school board. Belonging. Third priority that we have as a school board and for the twenty-one, twenty-two year, no less was it of value. We understand the importance of creating a sense of belonging for all members. And of course, beyond that, not just our students and staff, but our our community partners as well. The goals within that are that schools and workplaces are safe and welcoming for all, cultivating a positive sense of belonging and well-being. That relationships with all educational partners are nurtured and supported. Students are service minded, global citizens engaged and empowered to be leaders in their communities. And again, in terms of respondents, we see some of the results there, seventy-three percent agreed strongly or strongly agreed that we promote student safety, promote a positive sense of belonging, which is of course the key to it, we would like here. Project Search School to Work Internship Programs again gave students a great sense of what is available for them in terms of functional skills to prepare for employment. And that, of course, was something that we worked in concert with with others. Staff Appreciation Day, which is a long running event at this board, was celebrated during Education Week, Catholic Education Week last year as well. And again, the link here would give you a sense of the the strength of the staff we have here at this board. Black History Month, perfect to be highlighted now as we are in two thousand twenty-three. That year, we celebrated the many achievements, contributions of Black Canadians in the past and currently. This report also emphasizes the fact that this is something that is a highlight, but also is rooted in all of that we do in terms of human rights and equity. And that this goes beyond the month of February, that the resources that are available to our staff and to our students and families are there for much the rest of the year as well. And again, many of the events are highlighted there as well. We all belong in our HCDSB Catholic schools. Colors of the pride flag. June of twenty twenty-two, our schools raised awareness around Pride Month, nurturing our call to build safe and inclusive environments where every student and every member of our community is welcomed, valued. And that was based on a board motion here, the raising of the flag through the month of June. There's an array of different ways that the board and different sites within the board celebrated and marked that month then and beyond. Special Olympics Life Skills Track and Field Meets, going back to June of twenty twenty-two. Photos and words there highlight that as well, and what looks like not a bad day. And award winners at our school board. Sherry and Jody, respectively, recipients of the Paul Harris Fellowship Award. International Day of People with Disabilities was marked in two thousand twenty-one as well. Staff and students marked that and celebrated that. It certainly reflected the ethos and the mission of Catholic schools. With a special education summer learning program for students in grades four to twelve. Again, showing the commitment, the creativity, the imagination, good use of funds to ensure that all students have their needs met and not and beyond the September to June months as well. And again, there's links to much here in terms of former presentations and and celebrations as well. Certainly coming out of COVID, the mental health of our students and adults was a going concern, was before COVID hit. And so the focus on mental health has been. has been and continues to be of great importance. And so this also highlights Mental Health Week. That was in that first week of May as well, not that, of course, that's restricted to one, one week at our board. Catholic Parent Involvement Committee, C P I C, had a series of events. And it's really only when going back and looking behind us and seeing what this board has done, what other councils and organizations like C I C and C P I C have done, where you begin to really see all the work that's been done. Sarah Westbrook has been at many boards and she was certainly here at this board as well to help through C, C P I C, to help support parents who were certainly during the time of COVID rightly concerned about their child's, their children's wellbeing. Sarah helped again move that forward, the conversation forward and help parents gain some hope and gain some strength and skills in ensuring that their students or their children's needs were met, particularly in a time of, fair to say, a lot of stress and anxiety. The call for us for truth and reconciliation is marked here as well in terms of our celebration of Indigenous art and the family paint nights. And there's some beautiful pictures here showing what that looked like as students and their families from near and far worked to create some art that again, not only was aesthetically beautiful, but had a message of hope and a message of renewal and healing. Other highlights, celebrating Black excellence. Bishop Reading pilots a history course about the African Canadian experience. Often our understanding of the Black experience in Canada is not, it's Black experience in the United States or others. To highlight Black experience in Canada is truly something that we should be proud of. Our students are and our families are. And of course, human rights and equity is something that isn't just picked up in a book or something that is somehow through fifteen minutes of conversation gathered. It's an ongoing challenge. It's an ongoing learning for all of us and unlearning may be the most important part of that. And I think some of these numbers also speak for themselves. Nearly 9,000 participants through fifty plus training sessions regarding the, the work that's been done to help unlearn and help learn about all the components of human rights and equity that again are infused with our, our Catholic beliefs and the dignity of all people. And finally, what comes at the end, but could come at the beginning or could undergird everything we do through this, are the foundational elements. So how do we reach those priorities? Well, we have goals such as improving access to services and supports, that our communication is clear, results-based accountability and evidence form decision-making mark what we do, that there's a stewardship of resources. And that we're proactive in terms of recruitment talent so that we can meet the needs of our students. Seventy-four percent of respondents agreed or strongly agreed that communication from the school boards is clear, transparent. Student census began then. Supported by resources that would help staff and help families understand the importance of this workforce census, of course, that this board of trustees is well aware of. Initial steps to try and get a few more bits of understanding about who we are and whom we serve. So we can do a better job. So we're continually trying to do that. And again, there's some infographics there to give a rundown of some of those. Terms of pivoting, hate to say the word again, shifting to try and meet the needs of others. It's fair to highlight the existence of St. Clair Viscici, which again continued and continues to meet the needs of students. Though the numbers might be smaller than they were before. And things change, people leave, people go. We've added a couple of extremely valuable and well loved people to our staff as well. And we do grow. Ryan has told us, we've seen pictures and tweets, but we've been breaking ground and moving forward in terms of creating a bigger, broader school board as well. So just a few pictures here highlighting the events that show this board is, although it's, I know it's ebbed, we're still growing and we'll continue to grow through this year and next year as well, as you're well aware. And again, you can see some of those showing the growth of all our schools and the history of our schools. Our schools are well respected provincially and nationally in terms of our, our sustainability and our use of energy. They are beautiful schools. As you can tell by going into them. But again, it's good to, to know too, that we are ranked fourth in terms of this, this very important goal, which again aligns with not just good practice economically and environmentally, but also church teachings in terms of being stewards of creation. And another area that makes us a board that meets the needs of students who are three years old up to thirty-three or forty-three or higher is Thomas Merton Center as well. So we can see that Catholic education is something that is a long, long continuum of, of learning and education and a vocation. And again, there's some pictures and some highlights there about what we do in terms of the adult learning. And again, in terms of our stewardship and our sustainability, not just bricks and mortar, not just energy rates, but also people. Again, the work here to ensure that we are recruiting to get the best number of talented staff here at the board that we can. It is, as you're aware, a competitive market now in Ontario for not just teachers, but early childhood educators and pretty much anyone who works to help move school boards forward. And a bit of a highlight here in one of the areas that is sometimes the greatest challenge, that is French teachers as well. And this board is no, and not in, holds us second to none in terms of the variety of French language programs we have, whether it's extended French immersion or core French as well, which again meets the needs that have been clearly articulated from parents to, and then some numbers here in terms of the hires and the recruitment that we've done. And again, the sense of the monies that we have been given and how we distribute them. I would encourage you, because it is kind of like eating popcorn. I think if you were to go in here and see some of the links that lead to different areas, I would encourage you to, to go into these areas and look at some of those video clips, look at some of the reports that link to others. It is certainly something that you've been part of this, but to go back and look at that, I hope is something that makes all of us here feel proud and makes all of us feel that a little more hope because probably a year and more ago, when some of these events were occurring or the decisions that led up to them were being debated, maybe people really wondered what would happen or what would, what would be accomplished? And there we go. We and us all accomplished a lot. And we have to believe that that was through a lot of goodwill and I think the work of the Holy Spirit that sustains us and guides us through all of these things. So I don't have much more to add than that. I would just say, if you can, have others look through this. If we're looking for more people to come to our board, I don't think we could do much better than having them look through the photos and the clips here and the words that show that Hall and Catholic District School Board continues, as it has for many years, to ensure that our students are achieving their believing and that they feel that they belong every day throughout the year. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Director Klein, for your presentation of your annual report. I shall now open up the floor to trustees, if you have any questions to Director Klein. We have trustee O'Hearn Chanara, you have your hand up.
Thank you. And through you, Mr. Chair, every year we sit through and we get the director's report and it just really gobsmacked me of how many things that are going on in our board and and again, we emphasize is that I'm very proud to be part of the Hall and Catholic and all the work that everybody does. So everyone should really pat themselves on the back, at the same time, looking at some of the numbers here for belonging, albeit that are my hope moving forward for our next strategic plan is that we continue to increase those percentages from sixty-three to present to seventy-three percent, eighty-three percent to ninety-three percent. So, so there's a lot of hope and there's tons of work that have gone on there. So everybody in the room, please pat yourself on the back. We're not perfect. I think we, as long as we recognize that and try to do better and increase these numbers, we're on the right track. So thank you.
Thank you, trustee O'Hearn Chanara. Any other trustees have anything to add? We have a few new trustees, so some of the items presented probably are new to you, but any other comments from trustees? Trustee Saunders?
Just a quick comment. So I, last week I was at a Rapers Association meeting. There was myself and the public school trustee through Mr. Chair. And there was a lot of compliments for the school board and what we were doing. So a lot of the parents there weren't able to come to our schools, that the kids, but they were, they wanted to. And they had a lot of nice things to say. So I was happy to be up there and listen to those comments. So I think we're going in the right direction.
Thank you, trustee Saunders, for your comments. And I think, yeah, it's well received. Any other questions, trustees? If not, Director Klein, on behalf of all the trustees, and I'll just echo again, once again, what trustee O'Hearn Chanara said. Thank you for your presentation, which reflects the wonderful work we do at H C D S B. We are doing well in, in all areas and we continue to focus on the wholesome development of our students and well-being of our students as we prepare them for the tech savvy world of today. And all of the pillars that you touched on, the achieving, believing and belonging, we're doing well. And I must thank all the senior staff at the back there who have contributed to this and they are doing very well. Thank you so much for your support and Ms. Swindon for your wonderful presentation there and all the teachers and administrators and the work they do in our schools every single day. Great job. Well done. We need to see the report advanced next year as an update. Thank you so much. Once again. We shall now move on to our next order of business, which is delegations. Item five point one declined delegations. One delegation was declined for this meeting as the script was not submitted by the deadline for policy I dash O six delegation to the board. Detailed information has been shared with all trustees. No questions. Good. Our next order of business is the consent agenda items. The following items have been agreed upon at the agenda approval to stay on the consent agenda. Action item six point one, we have one action item on the minutes. And you will notice that we have split the consent agenda into two parts, the action part and the noted items. So there will be one motion for the action items and the other items, there will be no discussion and we'll be, move out with that. So the following items are on the action items, item six point one point one, which is actually approval of the minutes, item seven point one. Minutes of the January seventeenth, twenty twenty-three regular board meeting. We will take a vote on that. And the other items on the consent agenda, six point two point, item six point two will be noted. We will not be discussing that. So I shall now read the motion for the action item. Result that the Hall and Catholic District School Board approve consent agenda item six point one point one on February seventh, twenty twenty-three as submitted. May I have a mover for this? Moved by Vice Chair Agnew, looking for a second, please. Trustee Kelly. I shall now take it to a recorded vote. Give me a second, please. So it was moved by Vice Chair Agnew. Trustee Kennedy, how do you vote?
In favor.
Trustee O'Hearn Chanara?
In favor.
Vice Chair Agnew? Trustee Murphy?
In favor.
Trustee Saunders?
In favor.
Trustee Kelly?
In favor.
Trustee Chua?
In favor.
Trustee Kuzma?
In favor.
Trustee Carrabella?
In favor.
We have seven in favor, not opposed, no abstention. The motion carries, the consent agenda carries. We shall now move on to the next order of business. So if you've completed this, which is business arising from previous meeting, there's nothing there because it wasn't a consent agenda. Our next order of business is actually action items, item nine point one. National Accessibility Week, this was a notice of motion at the previous board meeting and it was put forth by trustee Agnew. Trustee Agnew, can you please read the motion?
Thank you. And through you, Mr. Chair. So the motion is here before my fellow trustees. I'll go ahead and read through it. So whereas National Accessibility Awareness Week takes place every year, starting on the last Sunday in May. And whereas this week offers an excellent Canadian wide focus on accessibility and inclusion and is promoted across communities and workplaces. And it's a time to celebrate the contributions of Canadians with disabilities. And whereas National Accessibility Week is also an opportunity to recognize the efforts of Canadians who are actively removing barriers and ensuring persons with disabilities have an equal chance to participate in all aspects of Canadian society. And whereas there continue to be physical, attitudinal, societal and systemic barriers to accessibility in our schools and our communities impacting our students, staff and families. And whereas the increased social and economic inclusion of persons with disabilities has a positive economic and social benefit for persons with disabilities, for schools, for our communities, for businesses, the economy and society in general. Be resolved that the Hall and Catholic District School Board formally recognized National Accessibility Awareness Week each year in our schools and across our system. And be further resolved that the H C D S B celebrate Red Shirt Day of Action for Accessibility and Inclusion, which occurs each year on the Wednesday during National Accessibility Awareness Week and which brings people together in schools, workplaces and communities everywhere in order to create a visible display of support for persons and families who are living with a disability.
Thank you, trustee Agnew. We have this motion moved, looking for a second, please.
I can second it.
Seconded by trustee Kelly. The motion is in order and I will place it on the table, but before we proceed, I'll just explain how we go about this again. The biolos are just refreshing, everybody's mind. Everybody's, I'll just do a kind of a refresher. So as per biolo ten point four, the mover will have five minutes to open discussion and then a period to close debate, three minutes for the person's moving. Each trustee will be allowed three minutes, okay, to ask questions. And then there's a question time and then trustees will get another three minutes for debate. So once the opening, once the mover does the five minute presentation, we will do questions, only questions. No amendments and no motions at that point in time, then we'll go to debate. At that point in time, if you need to amend, we'll amend it at that point in time. Sounds good? Okay. Thank you. Trustee Agnew, you're the floor to open discussion. Present.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair and through you. And, and really I feel that the motion itself is fairly explanatory, self-explanatory, but I just wanted to make a few comments. If you'll indulge me. And so the reality is that our world, our communities, our cities and so on are not fully or even partially accessible in some environments. And much work needs to be done in many ways to create places where any and all people can access. And accessibility is a need for some, but it's good for all. And this is not just about people with physical disabilities. This is for people who may have visual or hearing impairments, parents with kids in strollers, a teammate who may have broken their leg and wants to come and watch his team play hockey, a grandparent who had hip surgery, an employee who needs a mobility device because of a twisted ankle or a sprained arm. We have individuals in our communities who physically are not able to access buildings, lack of elevators, no automatic door openers, stairs at entrances, people who block accessible paths, accessible parking spots and companies or organizations who do not make an effort to remove physical barriers to access. Sometimes these are intentional, but more often than not, I think some of these are just because of a lack of awareness and a lack of understanding. A knowledge of what it is like to be left outside or downstairs or not be able to join friends and family at a venue or participate in an activity because they can't actually get into a facility. Beyond that, we have the harder barriers to remove and those are attitudinal or systemic. Perhaps someone who has never been impacted, so they don't see this as being an issue. Or they assume that everywhere is accessible because the government mandates the same, which we know is not the case. Perhaps have thought that it is no big deal if one or two people can't participate or have access as long as it works for the majority. Removing barriers by starting conversations, highlighting the importance of accessibility, identifying opportunities where we can all be better. identifying opportunities where we can all be better at accommodating. These are the goals of National Accessibility Awareness Week. A national Canadian-wide initiative that invites companies, communities, associations, individuals, schools, cities to embrace this chance of creating awareness with an ultimate goal of eliminating barriers to access for everyone. I would humbly ask my fellow trustees to support this motion. Everyone has a part to play in creating a diverse, inclusive and accessible public service. Let's embrace our chance to play our part at the HDSB. Let's change the way we think, talk and act about accessibility and inclusion. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, trustee Agnew. Now I shall open up the floor to question period only trustees. We shall do three minutes of questions only, then we will get into debate. So trustees, if you have your hand up, it's for questions only. So trustee, on the speakers list, we have trustee Murphy and then trustee Kelly. Trustee Murphy, you're the floor.
Yeah, I, through you, Mr. Chair. First off, I'd just like to say I'm definitely in support of any initiative that is for promoting empathy and understanding of individuals with disabilities, you know. So, but my question is, is at the school level, what will this look like? Like what kind, what kinds of things will the students be learning about? What kinds of programs will they be privy to? Just so I can get a little bit more understanding.
Thank you, trustee Murphy. I'll pass this on to trustee Agnew.
I can attempt to answer. So thank you, trustee Murphy, for the question, but I am absolutely not the expert. And I would definitely defer to staff on that. But what I have seen historically with some of initiatives that are similar to this has been, you know, either the creation of a subcommittee or, you know, staff goes back with this initiative and takes a look at what this might look like. And so is there a theme for that particular week? And then they take a look at crafting activities, is there books? Are there, you know, specific messaging? And I have to say that staff has been extremely amazing at putting together sort of what that looks like. So I don't pretend to even have a say in how they will put forward what that might look like in the schools. And I know it does differ from high school to elementary schools. But I know that staff in the past has, like I said, done an extraordinary job taking these initiatives and creating what that might look like at a school level.
Thank you, trustee Agnew. I'll pass it on to, to Director Klein to, to see what his comments are on trustee Murphy's query. Director Klein?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I really can only echo what the vice chair has said a short time ago. I think one of the things that I bear in mind is that the, the creativity and the passion of the staffs in our schools is, is phenomenal. And certainly as a former classroom teacher and principal, I was always amazed at what could be done. I would throw out that if, from a basic literacy standpoint, I think there's lots of opportunities for read alouds and shared readings and work within literacy itself where we could explore, I mean, the, the growing number of quality and varied texts that students can engage in with a creative and solid teacher in that regard as well in terms of inclusion and celebration. I think that would be just, just one, but I think there'd be many more that I'm sure my gallery of experts could get into as well, but we, we might not have the time.
Trustee Murphy, do you have a follow-up?
That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up on the speakers list, we have trustee Kelly. Trustee Kelly, you're the floor.
Thank you and through you, Mr. Chair. This is a fantastic motion. I think it is well needed and it really does help students to feel, students and staff to feel better supported and seen within our school board. I guess deferring off the question of trustee Murphy had. I do know that you mentioned that this isn't within our scope. It would be referred or deferred to staff in regards to how we would do different events or programs during that week. But would it be within the interest of students or staff who are also disabled, whether it's invisible disabilities or visible, to be included within these meetings? That way they can actually have their voices be heard within these and maybe have like speakers invited for assemblies so that it doesn't seem entirely performative and that students and staff are fully understanding what's going on in the background.
Trustee Agnew, do you want to end that?
I can answer a little bit and then I certainly can defer to staff. But I can use an example. So thank you for the question, trustee Kelly. But I, I do know that when the International Day of Persons with Disabilities was put forward, you know, we had videos done of students who were living with a disability who were speaking about the importance of that day. They were speaking about the contributions of people with disabilities in their schools and in their communities. And I know that there was reach out to students to get their feedback, to get their input. Because, you know, it's one thing to, it's one thing to sort of speak at someone. But really I think the greatest gains you get in this is, is speaking to people who are intimately affected. So I know that that was done by our subcommittee previously and I know that that's some of the work that's been done. But perhaps, you know, Superintendent Ballow would speak to that a little bit further.
Go ahead, Superintendent Ballow.
Thank you. I, I shall now defer to staff to add on to what trustee Agnew said. Superintendent Ballow?
Thank you and through you, Mr. Chair. I would echo what trustee Agnew said. We had a subcommittee that was developed for International Day of Persons with Disabilities. It was very well embraced. I think any opportunity that we have to engage in conversations and discussions to bring awareness is so important and so critical to all of our students and our staff. With regards to the week in particular, I do know that it's a week that we had noted through our communications department to include in our social media awareness. We're often tweeting out various dates. I think the addition of the red shirt would lend itself to that visual aspect and make it a little more meaningful for students. And we are very intentional in the subcommittee that was developed. We included students from elementary and secondary. They were amazing with their own experiences with disabilities and just thinking about the work that we've already started. It was a huge toolkit that was created by a very ambitious group. So even taking a look at some of the work that we've already done that specifically focuses on the area of accessibility, I think we're already off to a good start. And then reframing that work specifically for National Accessibility Week. So I, I do think that it would be a very well-formed group and it would take into consideration all of the examples that were mentioned as well around books and messaging for students. We created announcements for the entire week. We had a prayer for each day of the week. So we really made that Catholic connection as well with the communications for that week.
Thank you, Superintendent Ballow. Trustee Kelly, you have three minutes. You still have time. You can keep going.
No fault. I'm good. Thank you.
Okay, you have three minutes. So questions done. Next up, we have trustee O'Hanlon Chanara. You're the floor, trustee O'Hanlon Chanara.
Thank you very much. Through you, Mr. Chair. I have one main question. Why in God's green earth would we not adopt this motion? That's all I want to say and I'm looking forward to seeing it in the package next year from the director's report that we've adopted this motion. That's all I've got to say.
Thank you, trustees. So I do not see any other hands up for question period. So now I shall open up the floor for debate. So trustees, please put your hand up for debate and you have three minutes for debate and then we shall go into closing. So trustees, I'm waiting to see some hands up. Going once. So I see no other trustees hand up for debate. So I'm going to hand it back to trustee Agnew to close debate and then we shall take this to vote. Trustee Agnew, you're the floor.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I have no further comments. I think I've expressed my passion for this motion and why I think it's of utmost importance. And so again, I would just ask humbly for my student or for my fellow trustees to support this motion. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, trustee Agnew. And with that, I shall call the vote on item 9.1, which is the motion in front of us, National Accessibility Week. Moved by trustee Agnew, seconded by trustee Kelly. Trustee O'Hanlon Chanara?
In favor.
Trustee Agnew?
In favor.
Trustee Murphy?
In favor.
Trustee Saunders?
In favor.
Trustee Kelly?
In favor.
Trustee Chua?
In favor.
Trustee Kuzma?
In favor.
Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee Kennedy?
In favor.
We have seven in favor, none opposed, no abstention, the motion carries. Shall now move on to the next order of business, which is staff reports. And we do not have staff reports tonight. Moving further down our agenda, item number 11, information items. Item 11.1, student trustee update. Student trustees, do you have your updates?
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. So this is kind of a special update for tonight. On Friday, February 3rd, on our PA Day, we actually hosted as student trustees with the Student Senate, our first ever student trustee leadership retreat, which is hosted by us to help our student senators and student council presidents or executives lead in their communities. And with the rising concerns of mental health and negative mental health issues amongst our students and staff within the HDSB, we hosted, hosted this retreat in order to help our students lead themselves and lead their communities adequately within our board.
And it was an amazing day because we got to see so many students, not just from Student Senate, but also we invited student councils as well to come. And if you can see in the photo that's on the screen right now, we have so many students sitting there at Loyola. And this was just at the start of the day. The excitement was amazing seeing all the students there. They were all talking. It was super great to see everyone in person at something to getting, giving up their PD day on a Friday, right after exams, to come hang out with us and have our awesome leadership retreat. So it was super exciting to see all those students there. So we started the day off with a presentation by the mental health leads at the board, Glenda Brown and Jane Atchison. So it's special thank you to them. The presentation began with a game of sit slash stand where students would stand if they agreed with a topic and sit if they didn't. It featured fun prompts like stand if you've ever watched 90 Day Fiance, but all featured more important prompts. So just stand if you believe that more than 50% of students have, in our board, have positive mental health. Interestingly, for this prompt, only one student out of the entire group of around 60 students stood up in agreement with this. After the opening activity, the presentation began and included topics such as what work they do in the board, their annual strategic plan and its goals, as well as the tiered intervention model used to help students in schools.
And next we had a data analyst party by Dr. Collamore and her team. Again, thank you so much for hosting that with us. So the data party, the, for our data party, Dr. Collamore and her team were able to come in and show our student senators and our student leaders and ourselves what is really going on in the HDSB and what our students think about having safe spaces and belonging within our schools. So this data was taken by our COVID-19 round of surveying. So it is a little different of what students do think right now. But our students were consulted in saying, do these numbers make sense? Do these numbers make sense for online learning and how has it changed currently as a student going back to in-person learning? And a lot of students really love this activity, understanding what our board is doing to support student mental health and giving good suggestions of how we as a board of trustees or we as a board as a whole can help support our students and our staff when it comes to mental health. And I hope that it helps your research team develop more ideas and projects in the future for our students. And next we have our leadership styles activity. So this was one of our three breakout sessions. Our leadership styles activity was hosted by Ms. Taylor, who is the Chapmansley leader for St. Ceteri. She ran a breakout session for our students to talk about what makes them a leader and the different leadership styles that students have. So as we know, there are different leadership styles such as democratic, autocratic, things like that. And we're learning and discussing with each other of what leadership style really is the best. And out of all three groups that were in the session, we all agreed that there is no one leadership style that is the best. It does depend on the group and that anyone can be a leader. So many of our student senators and our student councils love that workshop and they learned a lot from it.
So next, to build off of that, we had a tower build, tower building challenge, just kind of to put what they've learned from that session into use. So for this challenge, senators were placed into random groups and tasked to build the tallest and most stable tower as they could. One student was also tasked to take notes on how the group worked together and what styles of leadership each group showed. And so in general, we saw a wider range of leadership styles, like democratic ones, where everyone was able to input their ideas. And then they grouped, built the tower as a team. We also some, saw some authoritarian groups where one person was taking charge and spearheading the build while everyone else kind of stood back and did what they were told. There were also some groups who took more laissez-faire approach where everyone was kind of on their own building the tower and it kind of ended up as their own jumbled mess of a tower. But most of them ended up turning out amazing. And it really showed how, doesn't really matter which leadership style you took. And some leadership styles are better for different sorts of tasks. Not every situation requires the same sort of leadership. And being able to change your style of leadership to suit each setting is an essential skill. And let's just go through some of the photos and see some of the towers that are sent. It's really fun to see how each group interpreted the challenge differently, using their items in so many different ways. And it was super cool to see how towers got stabilized. Some people even had guy wires using strings to keep their towers up. One group even showed off their creativity by adding a flag with their team name on it. And here we have the winning tower at the end of the presentation. At a staggering height of over 150 centimeters, while still being nearly unmovable during our stability tests. I think we may have some future engineers in this group. And so that was the tower building challenge and that was the last of our breakouts that we had.
Thank you, student trustees for your presentation. I like the sound of the, the data party. I like that. Sounds good. Once again, thank you so much. And trustees, do we have any questions for our student trustees? Oh, trustee Saunders, you have your hand up?
Yeah, just thank you for doing this. I, I was a little concerned. You said it was at 62, 61 sat down. Only one person thought that mental health was, was good in the schools. Is that right?
Yeah. So the question, let me just pull up the prompt that I had. So it was stand if you believe that more than 50% of students have positive mental health in our schools and only one person stood up.
So I'm just through you, Mr. Chair. Director Klein, is that something that, that we should explore a little more? Like if like sort of the, the ground up information is that there's, you know, people aren't confident that the mental health is. Is that something we should, is there like a survey or is there something we can do to kind of flesh out that? Because that concerns me that that many students are, you know, not, not confident with the mental health.
Before I jump to Director Klein, trustee Kuzma, do you want to add a little context to that? Go ahead.
Thank you and through you, Mr. Chair. So after this, everyone was kind of shocked that not many people stood up. But they did release a statistic. I forget the exact one they had told us. But I think from the student census or some sort of survey that they had, I think it was around 70% of students had answered that saying that they have good mental health. Though it's interesting to see that when asked directly, that so many students hadn't agreed with it as much.
Thank you. I'll pass it on to Director Klein if you'd like to add to that.
Sure. Through you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, trustee Saunders. Yeah, stats like that are obviously a little, a little disturbing. I would say, though I'm looking at Dr. Collamore over here in terms of the, the accuracy and the statistical strength of that, of that survey, it still would be on the face of it, a little worrisome. There's been a lot of, over the last 10 years, a lot of training and support for staff in particular in terms of understanding the continuum of mental health, understanding the, the role that all adults in schools play in terms of modeling it, being sensitive to and being observant of, you know, indicators of, of, of things that might need to be responded to among students and among their colleagues as well. So I would say that's something that's very, very important. I would invite either Dr. Collamore or, or Superintendent Ballow, if they want to jump in in terms of any other strategies or other things that we have in place to support our staff and support our students. So I would contend there's been a lot, but I'll look at Dr. Collamore over here.
Go ahead, Dr. Collamore.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Thanks. So we currently are collecting that type of data via our school climate surveys. So this year is a collection year. So we are planning to do a survey just after Easter. And there is a section that, that asks about student what health and wellbeing. And there is a special focus this year as we're collaborating with public health to include a battery of mental health specific items. So we will definitely know more about the school, this school year. But the data that, the question that is posed in, in that sort of context, you know, that is asking the students at that time, how are they feeling? It's very different from the number that they, that they quoted, which was from the last cycle, which was also during the pandemic in the 2021 school year. But yes, we will have more current data coming soon.
Thank you, Dr. Collamore. I'm going to ask Superintendent Ballow and put her on the spot. We are doing a lot of work in the background. Can you provide some kind of update?
Certainly. And through you, Mr. Chair. And thank you to Dr. Collamore for making that note with regards to our plan this year around collecting more current data and information. And again, not having the context of the presentation on Friday. From a high level perspective, we do have a mental health action plan. And I know that our chiefs of service did present and provide the overarching From a high-level perspective, we do have a mental health action plan and I know that our chiefs of service did present and provide the overarching goals. Within each of the three goals, there's a ton of work that's being done. There is ongoing continued professional development for all of our staff. We've really focused on a shared and collective responsibility of mental health beyond one or two people who are designated in a school. We've done a lot of capacity building with our students as well, they're part of our mental health advisory committee, working with our student senate as well, because we really want to hear from our students, what are the needs? If we're doing all of these things and we perceive that, you know, there's so much training, so much information that's going out to schools. We created a mental health toolkit this year as well that all staff have access to. We started the school year, the first September PA Day with a focus on mental health for all staff in every single school across our board. And we really unpacked, there were about fifty slides with regards to all of the strategies and tools and resources that are available, so it's quite lengthy. But we continue to monitor it very carefully and very closely and we're also very much looking forward to the updated data that's going to be collected as Dr. Collmore mentioned. And our partnership with Halton Public Health and engaging with them, we've met with them a number of times because they're also very interested in collecting some Halton data. And the source to collect that data is through schools and we have access to students. So I think that will be a very important collaborative opportunity for us to engage with them because they can also then provide services outside of the school. Oftentimes, parents are reaching out to community agencies and partners and Halton Public Health and this is an opportunity for them to know where they can put their efforts as well when families are reaching out to them outside of a school day. So more than happy to do a presentation perhaps at a future meeting. I know I've presented and our team has presented multiple times at our CAC meeting, but I would also offer that.
Thank you Superintendent Ballow. Trustee Saunders?
Yeah.
Does it help you?
Yeah, it's good. When those, the data comes in, it'd be really interesting to see, so thank you.
Thank you, trustee Saunders. I do not see any other hands up. Okay, trustee Kennedy, I just see your hand, you're the floor.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. Superintendent Ballow, just have a question. We had a student at the, an Oxta session recently, had a question for Minister Lache about preventative care, I believe, for mental health, more about physical education, I don't know if that's the answer, but is there anything in the, anything in the action plan for preventative care to, you know, help before mental health concerns arise?
Trustee Kennedy, I'll be a little careful here and how we venture into discussion. We are focused on the student trustees' report right now and we are venturing into different areas, so I'm okay to allow it this time, agenda is very light, but for the future, we stay focused on student trustees' report. Superintendent Ballow, if you would like to add to this.
Sure, thank you and through you, Mr. Chair. When we talk about preventative measures, we're really talking about the tiered model of intervention. And our tiered model has three tiers, so tier one has a very fulsome descriptor of all of the activities, resources, et cetera, that we do from a preventative standpoint. And really, tier one, when we look at the diagram, is the largest tier because that's where most of the work should be happening in order to be preventative, to move to the second and the third tier.
Thank you. I see no other hands up. And so student trustees, thank you for your presentation and, and your report. Really appreciate your work. Moving on down to the agenda item eleven point two, capital projects, first quarter, September first to November thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. Superintendent Love, you're the floor.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. Everyone, please find attached the report for the first quarter for our capital projects. As you can see, our projects are in line, based on the funding model. This report is submitted for information purposes, but trustee or superintendent Merrick or myself can answer any questions anyone may have.
Thank you for your detailed report, Superintendent Love, but trustees, do we have questions for Superintendent Love? Seeing none, thank you Superintendent Love for your presentation on capital projects, which is in the, the report is in the agenda package. Moving on down to item eleven point three, twenty twenty-three, twenty-four budget estimates, schedule and consultation. Again, Superintendent Love, you're the floor.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. Good evening again, everyone. Please find attached, similar to past years, our budget estimate schedule for the upcoming year. So it is budget time again, we're getting into that, that time of year. Typically, we should hopefully receive something from the ministry around mid to late March, but again, that's the, that's what it was, kind of the pre-COVID time, so hopefully we're kind of back into that schedule. I will just draw attention to part of the schedule, we have a, we use it as a place marker. It's for the trustee budget session one-on-one or new budget session, training session for new trustees and for all trustees. We had it for the middle of February, we've actually now, since this was published, it's going to be at the end of, actually, beginning of March. So we'll send something out with more information, so it's in there as more of a place marker for everyone that it's coming, we just didn't have the exact date yet, so.
Thank you Superintendent Love. Trustees, do we have questions for Superintendent Love? So Superintendent Love, how many sessions do you plan for trustees? In the past, we had a couple of sessions, two or three.
Yeah. We, we plan on having two, the two sessions is for, for information purposes and then a third one, just when we get more information and to kind of. So the first couple would be more for just how the budget process works, just because we are in a new board. So everyone knows, everyone's familiar with the process, kind of go through how we're funded, things like that. And then kind of get more of that one, as we had the past, the meeting where we really got into the actual budgets and our funding and such, and what we're actually expecting for funding for the program.
Thank you Superintendent Love. And as usual, trustees, this is an important function for us. You're more than welcome to approach Superintendent Love and have a one-on-one discussion with, with staff, okay? Thank you so much. I see no other hands up, so we shall move on to item eleven point four, International Student Program, ICEF Conference, twenty twenty-two, twenty-three. Superintendent Codero, you're presenting this, you're the floor.
Thank you and through you, Mr. Chair. Good evening, everyone. Before I present this information report, I wish to acknowledge and thank staff, Corinne Lauren, Tracy LeBont, Antonio Montanari and Ree Kai for their great work in supporting the Halton Catholic District School Board's International Students Programs, as well as my administrative assistant, Ms. Nikki Piva. In two thousand and fifteen, the Ministry of Education released a strategy for international education in Ontario. One of the overarching goals of the strategy is to internationalize Ontario's schools for all students, preparing them for global citizenship and competencies in the twenty-first century. In support of the ministry's strategy, the HCDSP has made a longstanding commitment to attend international recruitment fairs and will increase the enrollment of international students in both its elementary and secondary schools. With an expanded awareness of the world and of global citizenship, HCDSP students will be able to better appreciate and understand the gifts of diversity and inclusivity. The October thirtieth to November first, twenty twenty-two, ISIF Berlin Recruitment Fair was the world's largest networking event for the international education community, welcoming over two thousand four hundred participants from one hundred and fourteen countries. Similarly, the December fifteenth to seventeen, twenty twenty-two, ISIF San Diego Recruitment Fair was the largest US-hosted event. It welcomed approximately seven hundred participants from seventy-six countries. During the two recruitment fairs, the HCDSP participated in over seventy in-person meetings with representatives from Africa, Europe, Mexico, Central and South America and North and Southeast Asia. International agents were very impressed with the HCDSP and the International Student Program Office continues to correspond in building relationships and partnerships. Fourteen agent agreements have already been completed and the ISP office anticipates further partnerships as the weeks and months progress. It was a privilege and a pleasure to represent the HCDSP in its sharing its outstanding achievements and exemplary Catholic education system. That concludes the report. Through you, Mr. Chair, I welcome any questions that trustees may have.
Thank you Superintendent Codero for presenting your report. I shall now open up the floor to trustees for questions. Trustee Saunders, you have your hand up, you're the floor.
Yeah, I'm just wondering how many students we have in our board that are from this program? And what, how much money do they have to pay to, to come to our schools and be part of this program?
Thank you, trustee Saunders. I will pass the question to Superintendent Codero.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and through you to trustee Saunders. Excellent question. Currently, we have approximately a hundred and sixty to a hundred and seventy-five international students in our system, approximately a hundred and twenty-five in our secondary schools and approximately fifty in our elementary schools. The cost for an international student to continue their studies here in our system is about fifteen thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars that is contributed to the HCDSP. There is the additional cost that the student must incur if they are living with a Canada Home State Network or a sponsored family. That cost is approximately sixteen to seventeen thousand. If the student is in the elementary panel, then they must reside with either a close of kin, a family member or their parents, and then that's, that's a different cost altogether.
Thank you, trustee Saunders. Do you have a follow-up question? Okay, thank you. Next up is Vice Chair Agnew, you're the floor.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. So just a question on the number of international students that we have, how many of them are as a direct result of the participation in these particular conferences?
Superintendent Codero?
So if I may ask, through you, Mr. Chair, is trustee Agnew referring to these two particular ones or recruitment fairs in general?
I would say, because the reports on these two, let, maybe for specifics to these particular two?
Okay, good question. So we've signed so far about fourteen agent agreements. Recruitment for students for the current year do, are not a result, oh, sorry. The agent agreements of the, these two particular recruitment fairs do not result in registration of international students for the current year. They will look towards registration for the upcoming year of twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four and future years. So based on past experience of the last two years, we get about two or three families through agents to register their schools in our system. So if you use that multiplier of two or three times fourteen, it'll probably result in about forty to forty-five international students.
Thank you, Vice Chair Agnew, do you have a poll? Thank you. Thank you Superintendent Codero for your presentation.
You're very welcome.
I see no other hands up right now, so we shall move on to the next item on information items and, yeah, we are going to skip over item eleven point five, OCSTA resolutions because it was dealt within the consent agenda. Just a note there is that the motion was moved and seconded and it will go to OCSTA for future discussions as explained in an email. Our next order of business is miscellaneous, miscellaneous information and we do not have anything there because it's all moved to the consent agenda. Moving on down, correspondences, we have nothing there. And then next order of business is open question period. Director Klein, do we have any questions submitted today?
Mr. Chair, we do not.
Thank you, Director Klein, we do not have any questions submitted. We move on down to in-camera items, we do not have to go in camera, pretty good there, resolution regarding absentees. We have trustee Powell and trustee Bobby who absent, so trustee. So may I have a, may I have someone move our motion to excuse trustee Powell and trustee Bowie? Moved by trustee Murphy, seconded by trustee Vice Chair Agnew. All in favor? Anybody opposed? Seeing none, the motion carries. We have excused trustee Powell and trustee Bowie. And finally, our next order of business is the adjournment and closing prayer. Before we adjourn, trustees, I'd like to recognize and thank Nikki at the back there for all the wonderful work that you have done putting this together and I really appreciate that and we do appreciate that. Thank you, Nikki. And with that, may I now please have a motion to adjourn? May I have a mover and seconder? Look no further, trustee. So moved by trustee Saunders, looking for a seconder, trustee Murphy. Any, all in favor? Anybody opposed? Seeing none, the motion carries. May I ask trustee Kelly to please lead us in the closing prayer, trustee Kelly?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. If you could all join me in the sign of our faith as we close our meeting with a Hail Mary in the name of the Father, Son, Holy Spirit. Hail Mary, full of grace, the Lord is with thee, bless us with his love and bless us with the fruit of thy Jesus.
Thank you everybody for a great meeting. Good night.